All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please know all councilors are present and accounted for.
Did I turn it on?
Um, at this time, we're going to have some announcements and presentations. If you bear with me, we're gonna have announcements and presentations at this time. So I have the great honor of presenting the two of our residents that we are so very proud of. If both can come, Judge Susan E. Karen and Judge Eric D. The town of Bloomfield, the Bloomfield Town Council is delighted to present this citation to Mrs. Susan E. Karen for her outstanding achievements and tremendous efforts towards helping individuals in need. Ms. Karen is a partner with the Karen &amp; Paris LLC in Vernon, where since 2006, her practice has focused on family law, collaborative divorce, mediation, personal injury, and attorney disciplinary proceedings. Ms. Karen has provided pro bono services to a number of organizations throughout her legal career, and she worked as an adjunct professor with the University of Connecticut School of Law. Ms. Karen was also a member for the Zoning Board of Appeals Committee. Thank you for your service. And now therefore, I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, Mayor of the town of Bloomfield, along with the members of the Bloomfield Town Council, would like to congratulate Ms. Susan E. Karen on your appointment as Superior Court Judge for the state of Connecticut. Ms. Karen, please don't leave. The council will come around and shake hands once I'm done with Senator Coleman, Senator, Senator will always be Senator Coleman, right? Now Judge. The Bloomfield Town Council is delighted to present this citation to Mr. Eric D. Coleman for his outstanding achievements. Mr. Coleman began his service, the second Senatorial District, in 1995. Prior to his election to the Senate, he served in the House of Representatives from 1983 to 1994. Mr. Coleman made history in 2001, becoming the first African American to serve as Chair of the Judiciary Committee. Mr. Coleman has been a resident of Bloomfield for over 20 years and has also graciously been an active participant in all of its municipal elections. His monumental achievement has led to great success. And now therefore, I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, Mayor of the town of Bloomfield, along with the members of the Bloomfield Town Council, would like to congratulate Mr. Eric D. Coleman on your appointment as Superior Court Judge for the state of Connecticut.
Maybe we can catch him on the way by. Can you catch us? Here, can we catch you?
Congratulations, you deserve it.
Congratulations.
Eric.
Well done, Eric. Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to announce the appointment of an ad hoc design review committee. Those members that will be appointed to the design review committee will be Mark Weisman, Jonathan Coleman, Kevin Hussein, Michelle Benoni, Neil Clark, Derek Hughes, and Stephanie At this time, we will be doing our citizen's statements and petitions. I believe we have a long list this evening. We will be adhering to our three-minute rule. We will have a timekeeper down to the end. We're gonna ask you to please, please be mindful of the time and everyone else that's
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Town Council. You may remember me. I was here about a month ago. This evening, I still want to discuss-
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Maureen Halsart, 16 Milburn Drive.
Thank you.
I'm here to file for my presentation that I did a month ago regarding the overly-large sign on the corner of Loffler Road and Milburn Drive. It's still there. It's still problematic for a number of reasons. This evening, I'm gonna be submitting a sign petition by residents of Milburn Drive, Boonwood Drive, and some of the local area residents that really want that sign removed. As I reviewed with everybody in the last presentation, there are already a number of signs posted from Simsbury Town Line to Milburn Drive saying, "Welcome to Bloomfield. Bloomfield, three miles. Take a left, you'll find Bloomfield." There's also a number of signs from West Hartford, "Go straight, take a right. Bloomfield Center, three miles," et cetera. There's already enough signs that says, "Welcome to Bloomfield." This is just duplicative and unnecessary. It's also unappropriately large for a residential area, which is another major issue. It's a sightline issue for many people pulling out in Milburn Drive into Loffler Road, which carries a lot of traffic. You know, in addition, you know, if you're driving from Simsbury and you get to the corner of my road, you've driven 1.8 miles. If you've driven from West Hartford and you get to my corner, you've driven 2.9 miles. If you haven't figured it out by passing all those signs that say, "In Bloomfield," you shouldn't have a license. We don't need that sign. Now, there's a new problem. As you all know, that's all state property. And as state property, that's all mowed by the state of Connecticut. And they've got one of those, you know, those arm mowers. I don't know what the name of it is, but you've all seen them. Well, they can't mow that hill anymore because the sign is in the way. So last week, the grass was growing up to the bottom of the overly-large sign, and people couldn't see, and it's still a problem. So what used to be a nice manicured little area in Bloomfield where the side of the road was all mowed by the state, that hill was mowed by the state, across by the stop sign was mowed by the state, all the way down to Betsy and George's house, because that's where all the state property is, it all looks good, except now the hill where the sign is, because they can't mow it. We don't need that sign. We don't want that sign. It doesn't really serve any purpose. If you really need to find a place for that sign, put it on the hill over by Tumblebrook Country Club. That's a big, open field. You can put it behind the guardrail. Nobody's mowing there. It's much closer to the Bloomfield Town Line where it starts. That would make more sense. But please, don't put it like 15 feet in the air like the Penn Road sign is, because that is just, that's a joke out there. That's, if you haven't seen that, it's 10 feet in the air. So please, do our neighborhood proud. Take the sign down. Be respectful for what the residents would like. And I'll give the petition to the Secretary.
Good evening. My name is Martha Bracken Harris, and I live at Six Bear Ridge Drive in Bloomfield. I've been a resident of Bloomfield for almost 38 years. My first comment is a concern that I have about comments that were made about my family at the last Town Council meeting. Imagine my surprise when a speaker during public comment mentioned that my husband had a son-in-law. Now, I'm married to the accused Donald Harris, and since I don't have a son-in-law, I was taken aback by such untruth that was made in a public meeting. And the council never made any response. They just allowed that comment and others to remain unchallenged. I have a real issue that members of our community are allowed to come to your meeting and tell lies about one of your citizens. I'm also surprised that this has become a forum to try to defame two leaders in our community who have given hundreds of hours serving us, and to hear someone make light of the fact that our school superintendent was awarded the Connecticut Superintendent of the Year Award. If this is the way you plan to run our town, I'm afraid of what nonsense we're gonna have to endure in the future. And I implore you to come to agreement, all nine of you, to decide on a spokesperson for the press, so we don't have all of you giving interviews about our town to people who are just out forgetting gossip. If you do give an interview, please give the correct facts. Now, the real reason I'm here are students. I am a retired educator. I've worked for over 45 years as a teacher and administrator in both public and independent schools, including the Bloomfield Middle School, as it was known then. I've either had children or grandchildren in public schools, independent schools, parochial schools, charter schools, and magnet schools. I've taught students of all races, ethnicities, economic backgrounds, religions, and educational capabilities. I have never seen one perfect school or one perfect school system. Schools go are in many stages. They have ups, they have downs. I have maintained contact with the Bloomfield School District and the students since the mid-'70s, and I think it's important for someone who has dedicated her life to the education of all children to offer something to think about when evaluating and speaking about our schools. Be careful about the danger of telling a single story, as author Chimamanda Adichie mentions in her TED Talks presentation. Recently, I attended an event at the high school, and we were entertained by Bloomfield High students. I think of those wonderful students who work hard and are successful in many aspects, and my heart goes out to them because some citizens are talking so negatively about them as students and presenting data as though it applies to everybody. The negative spin on much of the data was presented at the last meeting, and the broad generalizations that were made were unfair to the many who are working hard and achieving. Beware of making a blanket statement when talking about standardized scores, especially when talking about students that you perceive are failing.
Excuse me, time.
To be continued.
Thank you, thank you.
I've been in town for almost all of my life. A year and a half when I was married, I did not live here. And I was born in East Hartford and came here when I was in kindergarten. So I preface my remarks that I've been around for a while. There have been many Town Councils and many governments, and citizens seek change. Change is good. Unfortunately, sometimes the change isn't quite what you expect. Our federal government is definitely not what I expect, not what a lot of other people expect, but it is what it is, and I hope that it gets better. I was very happy that there were going to be some changes on the council, because I don't always agree with everybody. There happens to be a gentleman on the council still who's not of my political persuasion, but he's been around for a long time, and though he knows that disagreements happen, I've never seen him not civil. And so I hope that this council will do better in the coming months ahead. There are four things that concern me. One is that the delay in the community center, the senior center, that cost us over $50,000 in delays. When you have tight budgets, you should keep to it, and delays such as were given are unforgivable. The other is, I've always said when I was in HR to my, both my managers and my employees, if you don't want to see it on the pages of Hartford Current, don't write it, don't say it, don't do it. Unfortunately, you spent an awful lot of money on meals that was unnecessary. $2,500, that averaged out to a little over $400 for each meeting, if it were eight meetings. That, you could've gone to Stop &amp; Shop and gotten a platter and gotten plenty of soda or whatever kind of soft drinks you wanted, or coffee, and you would've been fine. The third, and I, because I wrote it down, in all of these things, I don't get the newspaper, and I haven't attended meetings, but what's happened is I've heard all of this, the time's up? I'll say then, I just want to say one quick, quick thing. There was also an argument amongst council members, and someone had to step in before it got physical. Now, you are the representatives of this town. You should know better and you should do better. Please try and do your best.
Thank you.
Point of personal privilege. Point of personal privilege. Is it granite? Point of personal privilege.
I'm just trying to figure out how many people are on that list.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, Counselor McCleary.
So over the past couple of meetings, we have allowed numerous groups to come in here and speak over their three minutes. And I would ask you, Madam Mayor, it's in your discretion to allow the citizens to speak. We may not agree what we want, what you want to hear, but when there's parents on certain sides that we may have agreed it, we let them speak. We let people from the church speak longer than three minutes. So I would applaud that you find it to allow the citizens of Bloomfield to finish their statements.
Thank you, Counselor McCleary. Next person on the list.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Joe Suggs. I live at 10 Sandpiper Drive, and I'm here on a little different issue. I'm actually here to associate myself with the recognition and positive comments of the mayor and the council regarding Judge Coleman and Judge Carone. It certainly speaks volumes about the high quality of public servants in our small community of Bloomfield to have two judges named to the Connecticut Superior Court. As a resident, I'm grateful to both for their dedicated and distinguished service to our town. There is no doubt in my mind that we are a far better community because of their commitment to Bloomfield. I had the honor and privilege of knowing and working with Judge Coleman during his early career, when he served as Deputy Town Attorney for the town of Bloomfield during my tenure as mayor. And I'm thankful for all of his support while he was a state representative and a state senator. I'm also grateful to Governor Malloy for appointing them both, and again, I offer both Judge Coleman and Judge Carone my sincerest congratulations and best wishes for continued success in their new and exciting career. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Saucic. I've been a resident of Bloomfield for about three and a half years now, so not terribly long. I live at Castlewood Drive, and I'm currently trying to organize local residents against some developments that we recently learned about happening in our backyard, kind of happening under the radar. Some of us, not all of us, receive letters about M&amp;M Transport, trying to build, to develop 18 acres of land for a heavy trucking facility. This company currently has a facility near Blue Hills Ave, about an hour, sorry, about a mile from my house, and I'm not sure if other residents can agree with me, but we already hear the site. We hear throughout the night, it's a 24-hour operation, and basically, one of the things I hear is backup beepers, OSHA-required trucks. They have a beeper, apparently the beeper is on the order of 100 decibels. It's quite loud. They want to move this site within 500 feet of Castlewood, 300 feet of Brighton Park, and 800 feet of Mallory Ridge. And I'm not against business, but what I feel is this is a bad choice for Bloomfield for us, because this is gonna put a very disruptive trucking facility, heavy trucking facility, in our backyard. We're gonna hear this every day, 24/7. We're gonna see this. It's gonna be lit 24/7. So that's why I'm here to talk about this, and I've sent a mailing out to all the residents of these three neighborhoods, trying to get people involved. I've talked to a lot of people, and it sounds like the council can't do much necessarily because it's already in zoning. And that's really unfortunate, and that's part of the problem, is this slipped under the radar. How does this type of thing happen, especially in the face of Niagara? You know, I guess, at the time, I lived in town, I knew that caused a big flap. I didn't participate, although maybe possibly I should have. I guess at the time, decisions were made to try to prevent this from happening again in the future, and here I am, because it sounds like the same thing's happening. So, getting real on time here. Yeah, you know, I don't want to go into the details of all the pollution this is gonna cause us. It's gonna be 18 acres of land, 134 trailers, 110 tractors. It's gonna be quite disruptive for our neighborhood. And really, the question is, how is this gonna benefit the town of Bloomfield? You know, is it tax revenue, is it property sales? It's not gonna be new jobs. The company already exists here. So I'm trying to think about how this would offset our devaluation of property versus what the town, what the town as a whole is gonna benefit. And, you know, we're gonna fight this in the wetlands, we're gonna fight this in the zoning board, but I'm just letting you all know that we're here to fight this, and I'm gonna be seeking help. I'm not sure what you can do for me, but you might receive a phone call from me, and this is really important. I don't want to see this happen. Thank you very much.
My name is Kenneth Manning. I resign at 266 Park Ave, Bloomfield, Connecticut. I lived in Bloomfield since '75. I had two kids that graduated from Bloomfield High School and one who's a junior right now and plays sports. He plays basketball and football. I am a Bloomfield alumni, class of '84. I played basketball and football at the high school and won the first state championship as a quarterback in '83. I coached the rated youth football program for 11 years, and we won a championship with the A-team three years ago, the age group of 13. I coached the, I coached a team in Bloomfield Youth Basketball League in the winter, where I also won the championship last year, the group 11, 12, and 13. Last year, I coached the East Hartford Hornets, age group 11 and 12, and we won a championship last year. We were undefeated, 11-0. And the reason I give you this history is because this is how much I'm dedicated to the kids. Okay? And it hurts me so much on the thing that's going on at Bloomfield High School with the kids that needs to be addressed. If you give me a minute, it may take more than three minutes, but I'll try to make it short and just try to get it out, get the point to you guys at high level. Last year, in February, a few parents met with, a few parents and myself met with the A.D. and the principal and assistant A.D. and HR and assistant superintendent to discuss the head coaching job of last year when Bacher resigned. Okay? Along with some of the parents' requests with the, no, yeah, along with some parents' requests, a meeting with the superintendent that took place on Monday, March 26th. However, the same people that attended the meeting in April of last year were the same people who attended this meeting, with the exception of Mr. Guzman, who was the new person at the meeting. At that point in time, I told Mr. Guzman that the meeting would be a waste because of the same people that was present, was also present at the meeting in April, and we felt that nothing would get resolved. Okay? So in doing that, we've kind of, I'm the spokesperson for the parents and for the kids in Bloomfield, and they asked me to be the voice, because- in Bloomfield, and they asked me to be the voice, because of my long tender and the relationship I have with the kids and the parents. And we have a big concern on what's going in the high school with the athletic director in regards to mismanaging of funds, fraudulent items, and also nepotism. So, I have met with the Board of Education, it's in the process of being investigated, which I sent Mr. Guzman a corresponding email back in April of first, and here we are, close to school year, and it's still no resolution. So I'm coming to the town council to ask for help for the kids and for the community, and make this right. Everybody's, everybody's upset in regards to a hamburger of forty-nine dollars and so forth, but this is bigger than that. This has to do with a lot of things that's going wrong with the AD, so I ask that the town council look into that. Thank you.
I live at 213 Castlewood Drive. As you all know, there's a trucking company that is going to be built in our backyard. Now, I work nights for the town of Simsbury. I also was a truck driver, so I know that this will be very disturbing to the people, not only noise, but the pollution from the diesel. I went down and I checked out the area. It's a skinny road. If they, when they clear that road, all the animals will be displaced. We have a large bear population, deer. In my community where I live, there are people that are on oxygen, there are seniors who like to go out and enjoy the fresh air and listen to the wildlife, and will not be able to. The backup beepers are very loud. Not only that, there are plenty available spaces available on Blue Hills Avenue, not one, not two, but five, even larger than the space that is available to them in the back. There's also the animal rescue from Bloomfield, which houses the dogs and the cats. They will not be able to adjust to this, because animals don't adjust to noises like that. I would just, would like to make it apparent to you that I would wish I could be here for more meetings, but unable to, and that it just, just can't be. It's too small of an area. There's too many people this will affect, not only Castlewood, Brighton Ridge, and the, what's the other one?
Mallory Ridge.
I have been here in Bloomfield for a little over two and a half years. This will bring down my property value on my condo. I was told that condos were considered a buffer between the trucking company and the houses. This is not called for. We are not buffers, we are taxpayers. I was also told that there was two other sites available, and one of them supposedly was too small, and the second one wasn't even brought up, it was just brushed underneath the, underneath the carpet. This is unacceptable. I don't know about any of you, whether you live in Bloomfield or not, or if you've even taken a drive down there to see how many this, this would affect, but if you would take time in your busy schedules to go down there and take a look for yourself, how many people, how many animals this will affect, I would appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Joy Christie. I live at 212 Castlewood Drive in Bloomfield, and I have a question for you. My question is, you have heard from several of us in the community about our concern about the building that's being proposed behind our back door, really. Have you all made up your mind already? Is what we're saying and sharing with you tonight a waste of airtime in our time and your time? I need an answer to that question before I say anything else.
On behalf of the council, I'll be happy to tell you that the council has no decision-making authority in this matter at all. It's a matter before the Inland Wetlands and Committee Commission and the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. There will be a public hearing on June eighteenth, I believe in this room, by the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. There'll be a public hearing before the Town Planning and Zoning Commission on June twenty-eighth, here in the same, same room. The council is not involved with the application process, the review, or the approval of the process. We have been told by our town attorney that if the council gets involved and the application is denied because of town council interference, there's a possibility the applicant might sue the town and the council members in a, in a legal proceeding. But with that said, I don't think you finished your three minutes, I mean, you're certainly entitled to continue.
Okay. So, are any of you going to represent the town people in this, or do we have to represent ourself? Because that's what I'm hearing.
As I mentioned earlier, Reverend Joy, the council cannot participate in that particular process under the potential for legal action against them and against the town, okay?
Okay.
Obviously, your sentiments are being heard, not only by the council, but by those watching the TV, and I would suggest that, that the audience members who are interested in this particular topic attend these two public hearings and let your feelings be known. Those are legal public hearings, and, and attendance should be made at those hearings to make your feelings known on the issue.
Okay, thank you. The last part of my statement is very simple. I'm an environmentalist, I'm a community, community activist, and I'm a chaplain. So the people in my community that are affected, as Karen pointed out, in terms of breathing and being, and being able to walk outside, one of the reasons I moved to Bloomfield, where I moved, is because of the natural environment there, and how wonderfully Bloomfield has kept that alive throughout its premises. So this has been really disheartening to me as a community person and someone who really cares about my neighbors, as well as the four-leggeds and the winged people and the fish that are in the ponds and the wetlands that are all along Woodland Avenue. So, my statement is a statement of, please, those of you who are watching on the television, get off your couches, turn off your televisions, turn off your cellphones, and get your butts to the next meeting.
Good evening, Panzi Archer, five Brezenal Drive. I must apologize, I'm a little bit late, I've been traveling, so some things have gone by, so I'm here to address certain things. To the council, I must say, from what I'm hearing, I've heard negative things and I've good things. I must say, for what you have inherited, you all are doing a good job. I'm just asking that, do you agree, I know that you all cannot agree, and if you all agree, then that wouldn't work. So you all have to agree to disagree, but I do ask that you all work together. It's not about individual, it's about the town of Bloomfield, and that is what I expect. You all ran on the slate, and this is what we expect. We expect for you all to work together for the town of Bloomfield. For some instance, we always come and complain, and of course, but I must say that I've been at a couple of functions, and no being nosy, I heard someone mention about the town of Bloomfield and the mayor, so I listened, because I wanted to hear what they had to say. And to Madam Mayor, with all that's going on, and you've heard, and we all have heard it, and we know exactly what is happening, I'm here to say, I thank you for being humble and respectful and very classy, and continue with dignity. We thank you. Everyone is actually listening. I also had an issue, it happened that I was there and someone said, I said, "I'm from Bloomfield, I'm very proud of Bloomfield, I've lived here for forty years." And the person was very annoyed, and they said to me that you were proud in Bloomfield, but they were very concerned, it was big news, big news on the news about the fifty-dollar hamburger. It's not an issue for a lot of people expecting what's going on, but the issue was, there was a citizen in Stop &amp; Shop who had groceries, and they had to put back, they were over a dollar ninety. And the concern was, they had to put that on the grocery in order for them to, because they didn't have a dollar ninety. So I felt very embarrassed. Now, my point is, people do make mistakes, and normally burgers are the cheapest thing on the menu. What we're asking for is, we all know who did the burger or ordered this, and it's very fitting for the person to apologize to the town of Bloomfield. Now, I pay eight thousand dollars in taxes, I don't live in Avon. So listen, like they say, that fifty dollars could have prepared, go to the dollar store and get some pencils and books for those kindergarten kids coming in. So I'm asking, we're asking, that the person who ordered the burger to clear the air because it was on big news TV in the paper, to acknowledge who ordered the burger, to make it, everybody be satisfied. Thank you. So we're looking for that apology from the person. Thank you.
Jane Nadel Klein, eighty-two Terrafill Road. Some of you are used to hearing me come up here and rant about something, but today I actually want to say something positive, and that is, I am newly a member of the Town Beautification Committee, and I would encourage all of you to drive around the police station, the town council building where we are, over at the, towards Three Thirty Park, and at the Mary Hill Garden at the juncture of Park Avenue and Blue Hills, where we and a number of volunteers, and I'm giving a shout out to the volunteers wherever you are, shout out, we have been planting, we have been, in fact, trying to beautify the town. And so I want to point this out, encourage people to go and look, and encourage you to go and help us plant in the future. Okay? I wasn't going to say anything else, but hearing about the development regarding this trucking site, I don't live near it, but I share the concern of the residents have spoken, and I sincerely hope that something can be done, because that sounds like a social and ecological disaster. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll have reports from council subcommittees, Admin and Education.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for everyone for coming out tonight. Admin and Education Subcommittee met on June fourth at six-thirty, and the items on the agenda, council referred item eighteen dash seventy, consider and take action regarding police, pop, no, sorry, excuse me, policy item one-twenty dash ten regarding ride-alongs. That item was voted unanimously by the committee and referred tonight to the council tonight for a decision. Another item on our agenda was discussion and possible action regarding a policy on meals and budget, during budget meeting. We discussed that item during the subcommittee meeting, the council's working with, the committee's working with the town staff to come up with a policy, and for them to do a review to see what surrounding towns are currently doing for meals during budget session, and hopefully we'll have a decision on that during the next council meeting. Next item on the agenda was eighteen dash thirty-eight, consider and take action regarding ordinance on stormwater management regulation. That item was voted by the chameleon, referred to the council tonight for a decision, and that's my report, final report, Madam Mayor.
Finance, Councilor Goff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As with the last council meeting, we have not had another meeting of the Finance Committee. That meeting will be coming up on six-thirty, June eighteenth, next Monday. It is the, the normal agenda with a review of the current financials. However, the one thing that residents may be interested in is, we will be reviewing a draft policy on management of the town's policy, health policy reserves, and I urge everyone who is interested in that issue to please come out, read the draft in the agenda, and come out and give us your thoughts. Thank you very much.
Public Safety?
Madam Mayor, there was a meeting of Public Safety tonight at six-thirty. I showed up a little late because of work conflict, so at the next meeting, I'll be prepared to give a report, or if you would like to reserve it to the interim chair of the committee meeting tonight to give a report, that would be fine, but that's at your discretion.
Oh, Councilor Merrick said next week.
Why is she supposed to say?
Councilor Mann, if you can do committees on committees and land use and economic development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Neither of these committees met since the last council meeting. We do have dates coming up for the Committee on Committees, will meet next Monday on the eighteenth, Land Use and Economic Development on the nineteenth, so there'll be, it'll be reported the next council meeting. Thank you.
Old Business seventeen eighteen dash seventy, consider and take action regarding policy one-twenty dash ten ride-alongs.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve policy one-twenty dash ten ride-alongs.
All in favor?
Any discussions?
I, I have a discussion. I, I disagree with this policy in total. I, I don't believe that restricting council's ability to ride, do ride-alongs to two years is effective. I believe that this was an over-the-top policy, and I will never agree with it, so I just want to go on record with the fact that I believe that ride-alongs only benefit our community. It allows us to see what's going on in our community, when, when citizens are actually contacting us, because we are the face of our town. And if something's not going right, they're going to email us or contact us, and they want us to show our, our concern and get involved. And if ride-alongs is an opportunity to get involved and show our, our citizens that we're involved with the community, then I think that we need to do that. So my comment is, I strongly disagree.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Goff.
Yes, I, I do appreciate Councilor Marshall Neely's pointing out the positives of the ride-along policy, and I think it is, you know, I, I have not been a counselor that has been heavily involved in this one way or the other. I think it is good we have a policy. I think it is good that there is the opportunity for citizens or council members, or members of other committees, to do this and see the functioning of the police department or, or various other town entities, the snowplows, whatever. But I have to take exception to the idea that we shouldn't have a policy and it shouldn't be somewhat limiting. Another thing that we're very concerned about is the amount of town staff having time and the wherewithal to do the things they need to do in their, in their day-to-day work. And quite honestly, I think if we had an open-ended policy where- And quite honestly, I think if we had an open-ended policy where council members or the public or anyone else could go on as many ride-alongs as they wanted, I think that could wreak havoc with our town staff and with their ability to get their job done. So I, I don't have a strong feeling about this one way or the other in abstract. I think they've come up with a good policy, and as we've all noticed in the past few weeks with the meals and so forth, we need policies so that everyone knows what's going on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to add through you, I also believe that we should have had a policy in place in the first place. Could you imagine the public going on riding along with a police officer, and what if there's an incident and someone gets injured? I mean, who's going to be liable? That's the taxpayers, right? And we're here debating a $49 burger and people getting upset. Could you imagine if a lawsuit was to come against the town for some accident that occurred during a ride-along? We have to have policies in place so we can follow. So I understand the comments from my colleague, but at the same time, I think it's to benefit the town as a whole, not to gear it to one particular person.
Councilor DeLorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, do I use that? Thank you, I guess I'm not loud enough. Excuse me. I just wanted to say that we did have discussion on this, and we did review the policy, and we did read it. I did want to point out that the program restrictions do indicate on number five, that the participants in the ride-along program shall only be allowed to ride along once per 12-month period unless permitted by the department head or town manager. So I just want to point out that there is, there is some flexibility within the policy so that if there is a specific circumstance, either the department head or the town manager would have that ability to override and perhaps allow an additional ride-along. So even though it is limited to the once per 12-month period, you know, and again, I think as Deputy Mayor Rickford Curtin said, you know, we have to have a policy. We haven't had one up until now, so I think, you know, it's better that we start with something, and there's nothing in this policy that says it can't be changed. So I think we should try it, see how it works, keep the statistics of how many ride-alongs are actually taken, and go from there. If the policy, you know, if it deemed necessary to change it, then we take it back to Administration and Education and make the updates. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Call the question.
Call the question. So can I please have a vote on this ride-along policy? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 1718-38, Consider and Take Action Regarding Ordinance on Stormwater Management Regulations.
Madam Mayor, I move to schedule a public, sorry. Madam Mayor, I move to schedule a public hearing on June 25th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 1718-37, Consider and Take Action Regarding an Ordinance on Stormwater Drainage Code of Ordinances.
Madam Mayor, I move to schedule a public hearing on June 25th, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 1718-73, Consider and Take Action Regarding Tax Refunds.
No. I move to accept and return the tax refund.
All second.
Is there any discussions? Councilor Goff?
Madam Mayor, I certainly support this. I'm going to vote for it, but I am a little curious, and I just have a question of clarification. Why, after all of our discussion and citizen comment about the first congregational church nursery school, and are taxing them for the first time and blah, 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 why are they getting a tax refund for prior years? I'm confused with this. I'm just confused at this point of information as to how they were, you know, I thought we were being taxed for the first time. I'm happy to give a money, I just would like a clarification of that from the town manager, I suppose.
It's my understanding that as part of the procedure and process for appealing the lack of an exemption, the church went ahead and paid the additional funds that they thought were going to be due, and now there's, due to the change in the assessors, or after, I should say this, after his thorough investigation of the matter and deciding that the church school was exempt, we're now refunding those taxes that they had paid previously back to them.
Actually, Mr. Manager, Councilor DeLorenzo points out to me, and I did not notice it, it does have PP by it, so I assume that's personal property, so maybe that wouldn't even fall into the real estate issue that was being looked at.
Yes.
Because I, you know.
I'm not sure exactly.
Thank you.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Ayes have it. 1718-74, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Bloomfield Home Repair Grant Program.
Madam Mayor, I would like to have more discussion on this item and recommend it be sent to committee. I refer this item to Administration and Education Subcommittee for further discussion, preparation, and understanding of what is involved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I requested that this item be placed on the agenda as an effort to ensure and to create a competitive housing, housing and homeownership program in Bloomfield's neighborhood, and I would hope that this council would develop this, this piece of policy to promote home rehabilitation, marketability in Bloomfield. I think the incentives, once we get through the discussion and research of this program, we will see a lot of return on our investments once we put this in here. So I would strongly urge that we move this to the Administration and Education Committee.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 1718-75, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Bloomfield Bridge Program.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pick up on this and also make the same recommendation. It'd be referred to Education, Administration and Education Subcommittee for further discussion and development.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. So this Bloomfield Bridge, just to give a little bit of information, will be a partnership between the town, local businesses, and the schools to help to create a pathways for our children to be competitive and successful in alternative to a four-year college. If they choose not to go to a four-year college, to extend the STEM program, internships, apprenticeships programs, it will all be fleshed out in this Bloomfield Bridge program. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 1718-76, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Bloomfield Small Local Business Enterprise Program. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I will refer this, as with the last two items, I refer this item to Administration and Education Subcommittee for, to flesh out and for further review and recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Fellow counselors, as part of an ongoing effort to retain and create local jobs, expand our business base, and grow our Bloomfield economy, I'm hoping that this council would develop and adopt a small and local business incentive program. The policy will provide small and local businesses with preferred contracting and procurement opportunities within the town. It is my hope that we will have a policy that applies to all contracts and procurement offered by the town. In addition, contracts less than $150,000 should be reserved for local and small business participation. A local small business policy is similar to and consistent with our practices of giving town residents additional points when seeking employment with the town. It is also similar to our policy that provides businesses with tax benefits when developing business, the businesses in our community. The concept of this preference for local and small businesses is not new, as several other towns in the greater Hartford area have followed such policies for several years. I hope that we can also contact the Bloomfield Board of Ed and hope that they will consider adopting a similar policy with their procurement processes. And when we go to committee, I will provide a policy that is developed and utilized by Washington DC as a starting point and in a guide for us. So I hope that we all could support this initiative and move it to the Administration and Education Committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 1718-77, Consider and Take Action Regarding Cancellation of Meetings. Is there a motion?
I move.
You have to read the motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that the regular scheduled meeting of July 23rd, 2018, and August 27th, 2018 be canceled.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All, Councilor Mann?
Just note that this has been a tradition of prior councils as well, if the summer months.
That's correct.
Make it sometimes difficult to get a full complement of council people here for the night, so I think that's appropriate.
And I would also encourage committee chairman to consider, unless they have something special for the agenda of their Subcommittee meeting, that they consider canceling those as well, unless there's some new business.
So on the question to move that the regular scheduled meetings of July 23rd and August 27th be canceled, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 1718-78, Discuss and Possible Action Regarding Townwide Survey, Farmington River Park Master Plan.
Madam Mayor, I will move this forward. I move that we approve the attached, the survey that was attached to the council minute, or to the council agenda for the Farmington River Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
I would just hope that, I find this question a little bit open-ended. I don't know what they're quite looking for or what they expect to receive, but it might be tightened up with some more definitive answers of what's expected, what people might ask or respond to this. I think it's going to be offered online, it's going to be set up as an online, so it doesn't, you don't learn much about the person writing in as to what their needs are except how they answer the question. So it's a little bit iffy, but I think it doesn't cause severe problems, but I hope they could tighten it up a little bit more with respect to providing, not providing SA-type answers.
Madam Mayor, I would be happy to accept an amendment by motion that would leave open that we would approve this with the, with the proviso that council could send input to leisure services within the next few days to potentially tighten the, the survey if desired.
Madam Mayor, second amendment.
Are there any other discussions? So I know council want to clear your, go ahead.
It's okay.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm fine.
Okay. So I know that there was a motion on the floor to accept this, but then I'm assuming that it's a friendly amendment that was made to accept this with some provision to leisure services. So that's the motion on the floor right now. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is carried, carried with the friendly amendment as Councilor Goff stated. We'll have our report from our town manager.
Yes, Mayor, council members, I just wanted to remind everybody that Our Farm will be holding their party in plaid on June 22nd. This is becoming an annual occasion and certainly a great community event and an opportunity to get a full flavor of what Our Farm has to offer at Bloomfield. I'd like to also say that the Celebrate Bloomfield program was well-attended generally. The weather was great. Those that attended the mayor's ball had a great meal, a good time, and we were pleased to honor Sid Schulman for his many years of service and Command Aircraft for their commitment to Bloomfield as a home. So that pretty much completes my report.
So just piggybacking on what the town manager said, Celebrate Bloomfield was wonderful. It was a little humid, but it didn't rain. We had wonderful vendors on Saturday, the Bloomfield High School Choir under the leadership of Ms. Aubrey. Bowman did a fabulous job. We had paint night, we had movie night. It was really wonderful, and the mayor's fundraising ball was very well-attended. I want to thank all our sponsors, and I'm sure I'm going to miss someone, but I thank on behalf of the council, Signa, Seaberry, Heirloom Flat, Darren Grenae, Griffin Industrial, Howard K. Hill, or Fuqua. There are also other sponsors like Windsor Federal. We had a ton of raffle sponsors, and people bought the raffle tickets. And it was really, really nice to see the town come out to support this event and to raise money, because everything, thanks to our sponsors, everything that we made from ticket sales will be donated, and that donation will take place at our next town council meeting. And to the individuals that bought tickets as a donation, and we still have donations coming in. So as a, on behalf of the council, thank you very much for a wonderful event. Thank you to Phil and his town staff for putting in the time to make sure that this event was successful for our town and for the services that we're going to be able to donate to. Just as a way of the individuals that came in the room to speak tonight, thank everyone for coming out, and please, as the town manager pointed out about the public hearings, please, please come out and let your voices be heard. I think that's it. So approval of minutes, we have the May 29th, 2018 town council meeting.
Will we accept the minutes?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Councilor Goff?
Yes, I have some, some adjustments I would like to be made to the minutes. They're, they're all small, but it will take me a second, so if India is ready.
Is it possible just to give her those adjustments?
I would be happy to if the council, if the council wants to.
As I mentioned, I approve the adjustments.
All right.
Councilor Mann?
I would also comment that there needs to be somebody looking at this for typos, but in English. I said, these minutes, some of them are factual differences, others are just typos in proper English, and I think there should be someone else looking over them before they go out.
Councilor Merrick amended his.
I accepted the amendments.
With amendments. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Those meetings, minutes are accepted. April 5th, 2018, budget?
Move we accept it.
I will, I will second that, but I, but I have one adjustment to that.
I accept your adjustment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? April 30th, 2018? April 3rd, I'm sorry, 2018, budget minutes?
I move acceptance.
Second, but the same proviso. I have one, one adjustment.
Madam Mayor, could I make a suggestion going forward that the minutes get out to the council before, Hannah, we give feedback to the town, to India with any changes, so we can have this done ahead of time.
More officially.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
And I would apologize to the deputy mayor. I did not.
No, 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 because I get around to. No, 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 I also have some, a few changes myself, but I just think it would be more efficient to, to do this ahead of time, that's all.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes with the corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Council? Council comments. We're going to start with Counselor McCleary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be very brief tonight. There is, I think you might have overlooked it, the Hartford Foundation for Public Given will be here on Wednesday.
Right.
At our farm.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth. If you can come out, they've been doing sponsored ads on Facebook and communications on TV. It's very important, and that is a very good partner, potential partner for the town of Bloomfield. So if you can go out and partake and let them hear what you may think we need in our community, that would be greatly appreciated. And to the residents, I hear you. Our hands are tied with all this bureaucracy and state mandates on, on, on different projects that is before the zoning boards of appeals, there's, well, the zoning board. There's a project that potentially may be coming up that I am very passionate about, that I don't think should be here, but I have to subdue my passion. So I hear you, and I'll be rooting for you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor, Counselor Goff?
Where did you say that meeting was for, the public given?
Our farms.
When?
Wednesday.
The thirteenth.
I think seventeen.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty. Five thirty. Yes.
Counselor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Few quick comments. One, I did want to comment on the sign, the resident who came back talking about the sign at Milburn Drive, I guess. I want to echo Counselor Di Lorenzo's comment from last time, that I think there are a lot of good things about the signs, but I also think, as we've seen, some of them are a little misplaced, some of them are bending. So that it looks like we're living in a hobbit village, which is a little strange. I don't know what the reason for that is, and I guess we can get a report on that. But I do think that what we have to do with any project like this is, we need to now reevaluate a little bit, not just specifically this sign, but the signs, a lot of the sign, or not a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, but we need to reevaluate. What needs to happen now is the people, the people that first put this in place need to go around and say, yeah, that was our idea, did it work? Do we need to move a few of these things? Do we need to adjust the sizes? Are there other places that need signs? I would point out that I went by the Wittenberry Golf Course, and they don't have a sign. They have an old sign. And I did think one of the ideas here was to make all of our signage consistent, so that everywhere in Bloomfield was signed, you know, consistently. And I would hope with the design of the signs that some of our private enterprises, our private, our other partners, the Land Trust or the Historical Society, as they think about adding signs to, say, the Fannie Gabriel Center or something like that, would not make them exactly the same, but would be consistent, so that everything would be of one piece. So I like, I, I agree that the signs overall are a positive, but we need to think about those. I want to, I do want to mention the comment about the time for residents speaking, and I understand Counselor McCleary's concern about that. Unfortunately, as I think everyone on council knows, the last few council sessions, we've been a little sloppy in letting people go across time. So even though I certainly hear, you know, all of a sudden, all of a sudden now, we're going to enforce, we're really going to make a point of enforcing the rules, it's unfortunate for the people that do that, but I think you saw it did work well tonight to keep things moving and don't want to, you know, any resident, and I will emphasize this, is very, very welcome to contact any of us individually, express their concerns, and we will be happy to hear them. So I, I, I do understand that. I would also like to mention two programs I attended, and several other council members. We attended the public school, the Bloomfield Public School Awards Program. That was last, when, Thursday, I don't know, Wednesday, it was last Wednesday evening. And it was a very impressive evening. The number of awards was actually pretty staggering, and that's, that's a good thing, because we have a lot of talented, talented students in the, mostly the high school. There were a few junior high awards given at the end, because there's a series of awards that are given for, to be seniors. But it was a very, it was a very good event, and I stayed afterwards a little while for the reception, and you have never seen, you know, happier and excited kids. Took me back to the days when I was that young, which unfortunately was a long time ago. The last thing I attended, and I think it's, I think it's a very good thing, on Friday night, my wife and I attended a local flavor event, Think Globally, Act Locally. This was a fundraiser for the Hysanthro Williams Foundation for Children. This is the foundation that sponsors the backpack program where the backpacks are taken to various churches and community groups and loaded with food for, especially food for the weekend for, for children who maybe don't have enough to eat at home. And it's been around since, I think, two thousand and nine was when they started the program and it's expanded. That's great, the charity was great, the, what they're doing is great. But the other thing I want to mention is, what was great about this is it was a local event, it was put together by one of the partners and his wife at Waypoint Spirits, because of their involvement with this. They put it together and they basically went to almost entirely local businesses, Back East, Nature's Grocery, Ginza, Vios by the Water, which is just barely over the line, and Bear's Place, which I guess isn't quite contiguous, but, and a few other people who donated their talents. All of them were concerned, were promoting, we're a community, we have to stand together as a community, and we have to work for the good of our community locally. So Think Globally, Act Locally, they promised they're going to have a lot more events, and I think this is, this is the activity and energy that I'm seeing in Bloomfield, and I, I really want to continue, because quite honestly, no one else is going to save us. Thank you.
Counselor Di Lorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I also attended some events this past weekend, and similarly to Counselor Goff, attended the award ceremony for the kids, Bloomfield High School kids graduating this year, so, you know, our congratulations go out to them. It's always uplifting to see, I've attended several of those ceremonies over the years, and it's always good to see the kids be awarded for the hard work that they've put into their studies. And it is amazing to see some of the schools that they're accepted to, and in fact, I believe one of the young ladies is hoping to become a doctor. So that was, that was very nice. So hopefully she can get through medical school and actually come back to Bloomfield. Wouldn't that be nice, to have her back here? So also, just again, Celebrate Bloomfield was, was a great time. I was happy to see this year that we had a lot more food trucks, we had a lot of vendors under the tent, which was nice. We had Waypoint Spirits, and I found out that they actually sell, I thought you had to buy, yeah, I thought you had to buy their stuff at Waypoint Spirits, but it's actually available at Bloomfield Discount Lookers and probably some other places. So that was all good. The mayor's ball, the fundraising ball was a lot of fun. It was nice to celebrate both Sid Schulman and the Command Corporation, and have them be our honorees for the evening, and then again have all the proceeds go back to Bloomfield to support our, our youth. So that was all good. The signs, I think, we're going to be on these signs for a while, but I certainly agree with Counselor Goff that this, you know, once they put them out, we should take a step back and reevaluate, make sure things are where they should be and they look the way they should be. I certainly noticed, and I'm sad to say, the sign in front of Town Hall has a leaning post on it, so I don't know how that, that happens, but maybe we can get that fixed. And I think that is all I have for tonight, but again, remember to support your local community, give back to the town of Bloomfield, give to your food bank, your fuel bank, and please continue to come out. It's definitely good to see so many of our citizens come out and speak before the council. Again, we can't always talk back with you, but we're certainly open to hearing from you, and again, all of our information is out there on the website, so always feel free to contact us if you need to. Thank you, have a good night.
Counselor May.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to go over something that might have been glossed over at the beginning of this meeting. It was the passage and creation of a new design review board for the town. Very important, and very important to all of us who ran on the basis that we wanted to have this kind of body in place as part of our vision for the town, to allow us, the town, to determine what we want to look like in the future and not leave it up to individual developers who come in and do their thing. This is an advisory committee, will be serving not only the town plan and zoning committee, but also the town manager and other administrative departments who want to have a review. Perhaps if the signs were reviewed, we might have learned something more about that in the process. The board, the group that has been appointed to this body is some of the best people we have in town, if not the best in town, with respect to their professions and their understanding of, of design, urban design, how things fit together, the context of how they fit together, and what it means for movement of people and goods and, and traffic and so forth, which is what it's all about. So I'm very excited. It took us a long time to finalize the agreements to make this happen, and I really look forward to the first meeting and that this, this board will initially focus on the town center, where it has statutory authority, and will, will expand as soon as we can to other parts of the community. Second item, I wanted to just announce that the Wittenberry Land Trust will be holding their annual meeting Wednesday, this Wednesday, I'm sorry, the twentieth, from, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at our farm. The public is welcome. The highlight will be a presentation and discussion on all those black bears we're seeing in the community. And bring your kids, bring your family, and, and see what it's all about. Get an up-close and personal opportunity. This Wednesday at six o'clock in Tarrefill is a very important public meeting.
Tuesday night.
Tu, I get that right? I'm sorry, is it Tuesday?
It cannot be our announcement.
I'm sorry, tomorrow night in Tarrefill, at the Tarrefill School, there'll be a community meeting to discuss the connector that will bring the bicycle trail from Simsbury to Bloomfield, where we are about to make our first shovel in the ground and start our own bike path that's going to start up in the northwest corner, eventually passing through the center of town and go through Hart, to Hartford. So the purpose of the meeting in Tarrefill is to get people together on what that design is going to look like, where it's going to connect, what other issues involved. So it's important that we, that if anybody has an interest, that they show up for that. It's a Tarrefill School, I think there's only one in Tarrefill, you're bound to find it. One other item, I attended the annual meeting of the Wittenberry Historical Society last Wednesday, and I just want to report that it's quite, it's an excellent group of people who are committed to preserving and enhancing the traditions of our community. And they had a great musical presentation consisting of live music of some of the earliest recorded folk songs in New England. These were handed down through the benefit of, of a project started in Vermont, in which the recordings were done probably fifty years ago. And it's really quite amazing, because you hear the language that was used at the time, you hear what people were thinking about in the time. It might not be a whole lot different than today, but the language was different. And it was very interesting, but I, I call your attention mostly to the Historical Society and the work that they do, and hope that people out there will get to know what, what they are doing and join, participate. We are looking for community participation in, in every aspect of our community life. With that in mind, I also want to mention that I was one of the planters, the beautification process on the last couple of weekends.
I should picture.
And, and I want to tell you how enjoyable that was, to, to be working with the Pretty Brown Girl Club Number Eighty-Five from Medica Common School, and, and other people who showed up and who, who expressed a great deal of enthusiasm for doing something in their community. And that's why we're all here. Everybody does something, the community rises, and it takes everybody with it. And that's, that was a wonderful experience. So I also know that, I think it was mentioned earlier, that the beautification committee is looking for more participants, so please contact the town clerk, or you can contact the town manager, they'll get in the right place. I think that, oh, I wanted to make one, since we're all talking about the signs, we failed to mention the fact that a lot of opportunity was missed, because many of these are one-sided. You know, so you, I don't know whether being, the last council was being cheap in how they purchased these, but we're missing an opportunity of saying something else to the people who live, leave Hartown. Come back again, enjoy our conviviality. So I think if we take a look at these again, we should consider that, as well as the sighting of these, so that they're more for the driver, it's meant for traffic passing by, which makes it awfully difficult if it's parallel to the line of traffic. So I, I don't know what thinking went into it, but I hope we can make it better, so thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start off by thanking everyone for coming out tonight. Counselor Di Lorenzo said to me before the meeting started, I have never seen so many people coming out to a council meeting, so, but I'm, I'm happy that people are engaged. I will add that I think we have to be respectful when you talk about issues and you address individuals either here on the council or in the audience or at home. We have to be respectful, and we have to understand that as the rules. I mean, you come out here, you have a right to have an opinion on a matter. You know, we're here to listen to you, it's our job. You know, we have some strong shoulders, we're not easily offended. So I encourage you to continue to come out and express your concern about what's going on in the town. I also want to add that I attended the high school award ceremony, and I was very happy to be in attendance, to see the proud parents of all those students that were receiving awards. It was exciting. I couldn't stay until the end of the event. Councilman Goff stayed and reported at the end, but it was exciting to be there in the audience, to see all those proud parents, and for the students that have put a lot into the past few years, attending high school and following through and going on to universities. And so, in addition to that, I also want to add, please come out to subcommittee meetings. You have an opportunity to influence what we're doing by coming out and providing your input and comment. A lot of things don't really get done here at the council and discussed, but when you come to a committee meeting, a lot of discussion takes place at those meetings, and you have an opportunity to, to express yourself and probably to help us change what's going on. In addition to that, I just want to continue to encourage you to come out. I'm happy that, I saw, I see a sign in the audience. Also, I want to add that the Laurel Fear I attended also was very excited. The only thing I would say about the fear, and I say this every single year to Dave Malesko, we cannot have the fear the same day as the events at the Town Green, because what happens, that event is free, there's a lot of free food, a lot of games for the kids, so a lot of parents defer to take their kids to Laurel instead of coming to the Town Green. Celebrate Bloomfield, sorry. So I encourage for our staff to work together to make sure that we can actually have it on different days instead of the same day. But that's it for me. I just want to continue to encourage you to come out and have a good evening. Thank you.
Counselor Waterhouse?
She's not here.
Okay. Counselor Marshall Neely?
I would like to say a sincere congratulations to Judge Karen and Judge Coleman. I personally know Judge Coleman and all of the work that he's done over all of these years, not just for Bloomfield, but for the state of Connecticut and everything he's contributed selflessly. So for both of them, from me, I would like to say to you, congratulations. I agree with regard to attending subcommittee meetings, because it's important that the town learns what's going on with Philly Pond, Town Green, Three Thirty Park, any new, any new companies or businesses that want to come into the town. If you attend these meetings, you'll hear firsthand what the, what the presentations are and what the purpose of that business is that's coming in. If you attend those meetings, you will know that for some of the, some of the situations, the town council the town council actually has no control over some things that that happen in our town. What we can do is we can refer you to the the appropriate committee so that you can go to those meetings, so that you can ask the right questions or ascertain whatever data you need, but it is important that you do attend those subcommittee meetings. I agree with that. I need to comment with regard to the signs. And I, I heard someone say that the golf course didn't have a sign. Well, they can take the one from Millburn and put it over there if they want to. It's so huge, it's unbelievable, and just trying to mow the grass is a problem. And I live in that neighborhood, and I have two neighbors who ride motorcycles, and it's very difficult to see when you're trying to veer into traffic and you're on a motorcycle and the weeds are high and the sign is big, and it's really not providing anything good for that area. So if if others like the sign, that's good, but on Millburn, I recommend you just take it. If you want the golf course to have it, give it to them. And then, finally, I just want to say, if I were to present a citizens' award to a Bloomfield resident for selflessly, selflessly doing something for the community, it would be for Sheree McDowell. You may not know her, may not have heard her name before, but this is a woman who takes her vehicle that's not, it's not a state-of-the-art vehicle, drives to Cromwell, Connecticut every Tuesday, and and gets stocks, stocks of bread, and squishes it all into her vehicle and comes back to the town of Bloomfield to hand it out to the residents of Bloomfield. And she does it, she's been doing it before we became councilors. She's been doing it for years without recognition. And for anyone who's giving something back selflessly, using her gas, she's doing it by herself primarily because the person that was helping her can't do it any longer, she's had a mechanical problem with her her vehicle, and she's not asking for anything in return, she just takes great pride in giving back to the community. If I had to give any kind of recognition, it would be to Sheree McDowell. And I just want to close and say, well done, Sheree, wherever you are, I hope you're watching, you're doing a great job.
Councilor Merritt.
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said, and I won't repeat it all, although I will comment, I really like the design of those signs compared with ones we've had in the past. You can argue about the placement, the construction, and everything else, but I think that design-wise, they're far superior to what we've had before. But what's got me most excited is the news I heard today that the bike path is actually going to happen. And I have to say, I have been saying to people, next year and next year for about, oh, maybe fifteen years? I mean, it's unbelievable how long this is taking, and I'm so happy it's happening now, at least I hope it is. I will believe it when I see the tar. But it's, it is exciting, and I I look forward to it, and it's become a little bit of an obsession, I guess, maybe an unhealthy one. But I have, now my neighbors are saying, they don't believe me, they really don't. So I'm, it's, when it appears they're going to know it's happening, so I am so happy about that. Thank you, Jonathan, and everybody else that's worked on it. But it's, it's, to me, something that I've been trying to get for some ten or fifteen years, and this is just the start, because once you get that first bike path in, people love it, and they said, oh, let's get the rest of it done. So that's what's happened. Over in Simsbury, you see how, they love their bike paths, and Avon and so on, and we're blessed, of course, with the town manager who went through this process and Avon, so he knows what it's all about. And I, I hope, I, I, I think what's going to happen is people say, oh, let's finish it and put it all the way through town. It'll be, it'll become a great asset, and I think we'll be very proud that we are on the East Coast Greenway. This is going from Maine to Florida, and we're going to be on it. It's kind of the Route One of the, of the bike path system. It's kind of like the Appalachian Trail, except it goes through cities.
We're going to send Councilor Merritt over to Plainville.
Do you want to send me to Plainville?
We're going to send you to Plainville.
So, okay, get that through. But I'm so happy about it, I just want to express my gratitude. Thank you.
Excellent. So before, we have one last presentation. I do want to say thank you to the Blue Hills Fire for their education fund day that just happened this past Saturday. It was very good. We had firefighters out there, we had the police out there doing car seat safety checks. It was a really good community event, so I want to thank them. I, too, was at the high school graduation. It was wonderful to see and hear of our students going to UConn, Cornell, UMass, the great schools that our, that our students will be going to. So kudos to them for their hard work. The valedictorian and the salutatorian were both women, which is a good thing. They were both girls. So we're happy about that. There's one more thing that I wanted to say. Just as a point of 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 information, we already have sponsors for next year's Mayor's Fundraising Ball. So that's an amazing thing. Once again, thank you. I, we always say thank you to everyone that comes out to town council because we appreciate the fact that you come out. But the ones that stay to the end of the meeting, you are the real MVP because you stick it out with us, and we thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I've asked Jonathan Thiesy to stay for a few minutes and kind of just give you a quick overview of all of the projects that we have going this summer so that you understand when the roads may be closed from time to time or other activities are going on. So Jonathan, could you come to the podium and perhaps just very quickly go over what's programmed for Bloomfield this summer in terms of construction projects?
Okay, I'll try to do this really quick, although there are quite a few of them. So we talked, Council, Councilor Merritt, kind of about the Greenway Section One. We've, we've got, you know, bids are open, we've got the authorization to award that should be happening this week. Construction by the end, you know, hopefully by the end of the month, we will have our contractor out there. It's one-year construction. We also talked about the Tarrefil Connector. Again, that will be the meeting tomorrow night in, at Tarrefil School in Tarrefil. The meeting, the time runs from six to eight. The first half hour will be just kind of an open house type thing. The formal presentation will be at six thirty, and then there'll be time afterwards for, like, individual question and answers.
Can I just ask one question about that? What do you define as the connector? Is that to Tarrefil or is that from Tarrefil to Route Ten?
It's, it's, no, it's, it's from Tarrefil, going from Main, yeah, Main Street and Tarrefil along one eighty-nine to connect in with with the section we're about ready to build, the other we're talking about. There's still going to be a gap in, in in Simsbury that they're working on. So, yeah, so that design is moving forward. That project is is scheduled to, we're hoping, right now the schedule is with our consultant, to advertise that in December, open bids in January, and be under construction probably in April next year. Philly Park, the contract is moving forward. It's, you know, it's kind of hard to believe sometimes, I think, when you drive by, but it's actually, it's on schedule, where they were at starting. There's a lot of, again, detail work and, you know, concrete pores and stuff that just take a lot of time on the backside of the island. When they get caught up with that, or when they get done with that, which, you know, will probably be in the next three weeks or so, and they move around to the other side and start building the dam and and doing the, you'll see a lot more activity out there. It'll seem a lot more like, given what they're spending, you know, what we're spending on it, what's happening, but, but it really is on schedule. They, you know, a lot of wat, dewatering they have to deal with back there and what they have to do, and so that's kind of, although the new, it's kind of hard to see, I suppose, it's to go on the site, but the new pedestrian bridge is in, and it looks pretty nice, yeah. Town Green is in a, kind of an interim stage right now. Again, we did get, the, the real priority, starting last fall, was to get the sidewalks in in decent shape. They were in very poor shape, they were, we had some trips out there. So that's been done, and we got the sidewalks open around, you know, basically around the perimeter of the green so people can move back through the, through the town center right now. How that played out kind of adjusted the sidewalks from, from the original concept. So what we're doing right now is I'm, I'm putting under contract with the consultant starting this week to do, revise the concept based on where we're at right now and what we're looking at, and kind of get it to preliminary design, planning on having, trying to get together with the consultant and and key stakeholders, probably, you know, members of beautif, beautification committee, members of your new design review team, you know, town staff, and we'll take input for anybody else who thinks should be on that, but to, hopefully next, probably late next week or early the week after that, to try to have a, a meeting to go over the new, the new concept and try and get some input back on that. And then sometime, hopefully, at your July meeting, we would shoot for it, to give a presentation to the council here on, on the, the new concept and preliminary design and that. And kind of concurrently with that will be the, starting to develop the, the construction plans for Phase Two, so we could get Phase Two underway in, hopefully, late August, so that we can get, get irrigation in and get the, you know, the grass, actually, real grass grown out there with irrigation come fall, and and get monuments moved and things that we need to get out of the center before we could put the irrigation system in.
Jonathan, just a quick question. So when would residents be able to use the, that space?
Not till next spring. It's not, it is not really going to be available till next spring for...
So have we made that information available to the public?
Um, I am working on, that's one of the things I'm doing for all those projects. No, I understand.
It seems like you've, you've, you've known about the decision as far as, but I get a lot of questions about...
Yeah, I understand.
When would it be available?
I'm working on getting some, we're working on the website and getting some stuff up to date on all these projects to be able to keep the public informed as I can find time. But, yeah, so that, my goal is for, by your next meeting, that I will have something up there for all the projects that I'm going over here so that people can go on and get updates on what's happening on all the projects and try to keep regular updates in there every two weeks or so.
Because I hate to say, it's news to me that we're not going to use it this year, so...
Okay.
That's surprising. Yeah.
Granby Street, again, we, we should, I believe, this week, we'll get the authorization to award that project as well, and that should be starting in construction again by the end of the month.
Could you specifically talk about what project you're talking, you were referring to?
Oh, Granby Street? Granby Street is drainage, replacing the drainage on Granby Street and then doing pavement rehabilitation. Most of it, for most of the length of the road, it's just a mill and overlay around Toby Road, right at Toby Road intersection, the pavement's in pretty, is in worse shape, and so there, there's actually going to be full-depth reconstruction to restore that, the road in that location. That, the intent is the contractors can get that done this year, so that'll be, you know, completed probably November, but... Mountain Avenue sidewalk, the design has been complete. It's kind of been back burner a little bit as we deal with some of these other projects, but the, the plan is to get that into construction somewhere later in the summer. So that'll be done this year. The MDC also has four projects going on in town, are getting ready to start up. The big one is their water transmission main. The full project is going to put a new thirty-inch main from Burr Road on, and Maple Avenue intersection, all the way to the Woodland Avenue and Mills Lane intersection. The first phase of the project runs from Burr Road and may, along, or from the intersection of Burr Road, Maple Avenue, all the way up Maple Avenue, crossing Mountain Avenue, and then running up Brown Street to about Breezy, Breezy Knoll, which is just past the school, the, the pre-K magnet school. The contractor, I was at a pre-construction meeting today, expect the contractor to begin probably the last week of June. They will be beginning up, actually, at the north end at the Breezy Knoll and, and, no, it's, it's actually LTC construction out of New Burton. Oh, by the way, that, just to go back for a second, the, the Greenway project actually is a Bloomfield contractor. It's King Construction right here out of Bloomfield, so that's kind of nice to see that they got the, and Granby Street is VMS Construction, a very good contractor who's worked on a number of projects in town. Also, the MDC is going to be doing some sewer work. They've got a project on the east side of town. It's a combination of lining and and dig replacement affecting Forest Lane, which will be all lining. Daniel Boulevard from Packard to Forest will be a combination of lining and replacement. Packard Boulevard, Packard Street from Daniel to May, again, a combination of lining and replacement. Bamfield Lane is, is replacement, and Joy Street is a combination of lining and replacement. And again, that'll be beginning shortly. There'll be, you know, notices, the, the MDC's is pretty good about notifying adjacent properties and homeowners, but again, it's going to affect, you know, it's going to have some effect on, on traffic and stuff in that area. Also found out that there's going to be some emergency work done up in the high hill area off of Simsbury Road. Most of that is lining, it's just about all lining, and when they're lining, they just have to set up over the manholes and and get the liner down in and cure it. So you're basically got a big truck at, at either, you know, either sides of manholes, but they're not digging, and they, they can do it a lot quicker. There's one small, I think there's about a little over a hundred feet of replacement that'll, that will be happening up there. And finally, they've got a project to replace, do some sewer replacement, this is all digging on Woodland Avenue, that will be running from about, I think it's, it's about the Brighton Park, from about the Brighton Park entrance to Peters Road and through the intersection of Peters Road. The big thing about that is, and that should be starting in July, is that because of the location and the depth of the sewer, they're going to be shutting down Woodland Avenue, which is not a nice thing because there's not a good detour there, but they, we worked with them when we tried to figure out ways they could, you know, bypass or do something to keep one lane of traffic open, and they're just, because of the type of soils out there and, and where it's located, it just wasn't feasible. So there's going to be probably six weeks or so, I think, of, out of this. It might not take that long, maybe four weeks, where Woodland will be closed to traffic during the daytime. I think they'll try to get it back open at night, but...
John, I just want to get back to the project you mentioned on Granby Street, which I think is extremely important. However, there are a number of vacant properties there, and my concern is that we put in this really nice new street, and then you start to get some new development there, you start carving up the street for new taps to the, to the line. Is there some way that we can anticipate and put some stubs at, at regular intervals so that we don't have to come back in and tear the street up again in another six months?
I believe most of the properties there, except maybe the ones right south of Wendy's, have previously had services to those streets, so those services would still exist.
Yes.
For most of them.
Those might remain, but the, the new development that takes place there might be entirely different than those buildings that were built fifty years ago.
There's no way for us to predict where or how somebody might come in differently. Generally, they will try their best to reuse the, you know, the ones that are there.
That would be best, but...
It would be.
Maybe you guys...
And it's, you know, once they're in service or when they, when they, unless things have changed, the, the MDC and certainly the gas company are not too inclined to want to just put stubs in speculatively.
Tara, we've always had this problem. In fact, when we resurfaced on Castor Road, we wrote a letter to everybody on it saying, if you're going to do anything, connect anything, please do it now before we resurface it. So I, I think that's important, and I, I think on Woodland, aren't we planning to do some resurfacing of Woodland?
Yep, yes.
Is that in the same areas that they'll be digging up for the sewers?
No, no, we're, we're working on both sides of where they're doing it. We've accommodated that, yes. So, that's what I've got.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. Can, can we have a motion to go into executive session? Where we'll be discussing pending claims and litigation, discussion concerning a real, acquisition of real property, discussion of personal matters, town manager's goals and objectives. In the executive session is the town manager, the assistant to the town manager, and our town attorney.
So moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
You may not have heard, or maybe you weren't here, but I'm sure you've heard about it after.